Call the meeting now or... Please call the roll.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. At this time we will stand and we'll have our invocation and pledge by Mr. Christopher Hudson.
Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight to conduct the county's business. Let us be mindful that what we're doing is affecting the citizens of this county. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. We'll have the approval of our minutes from February 4th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adoption of our agenda?
Second.
Any question, concerns? Nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
No approval of agenda for tonight? Matters presented by the board? Any matters presented by the board? No matters presented by the board? We'll move on to county administrator items.
Thank you. Just a few items. First of all, I was thinking about it a little while ago. It is April 15th, so that is a special date. So my first reminder is it's tax day. The second is that this Saturday will be the Spring Household Harmful Waste Collection, and that'll be at the Hayes Convenience Center. And that'll be from 9 to 3. Also, to let you know to be on the lookout for a public survey, and we'll have announcements on how to get to it coming soon, but it's on the citizens' opinion of a working waterfront and possibly having separated areas for that with a working waterfront overlay district. And then I'd like to end with congratulating all the people who worked so hard on the Daffodil Festival. They did the best job ever with the weather, and it was just a fantastic event. And it takes hundreds of volunteers and staff to put it on, and it just was a grand success. Thank you.
Our public comments? Anyone? Comments tonight? Limited to our work session agenda? No comments? Okay. All right. We'll move on to our work... Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. No emails?
No, Mr. Shit, we did receive some comments that are for budget and tax rates that we have contacted the individuals to let them know we will read on Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Work session agenda. First up, Freedom of Information Act training. Mr. Wilmot?
Would you prefer that I speak from here or from the dais?
From the dais.
Relax.
Are we sure Mr. Wilmot's qualified to?
I'm not. FOIA, my CV. He can correct me if I'm... I can sit corrected. All right, well, FOIA training, that's tonight, and I'll try not to drone on and on. If Paul Simon were asked, "Why are we here tonight?", he might have said, "God only knows. God makes his plan. Plan: the information is unavailable to the mortal man." That's from slip-sliding away. Although, in the context of FOIA, he might say, "The information is available to the mortal man." So what is FOIA? It's the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. It's codified in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3700 at Seekor and following. It's not really a Freedom of Information Act because that's a misnomer. When you say Freedom of Information Act, it gives the implication that that gives the public the right to information. It makes us answer questions, and that's not what it's all about, Charlie Brown. What it's about is that the Freedom of Information Act is the Open Access to Public Records and Open Access to Public Meetings Act. I think that might have been a little too long. It was unwieldy. So they called it FOIA instead. Under the code, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act is to be given a liberal... I'm sorry to use that word, construction. Meaning, if there's a doubt as to openness of meetings or as to exemption from disclosure requirements, the act is to be liberally construed in favor of openness and against secrecy and closed-door meetings. What is FOIA applicable to? It's applicable to public bodies, and public bodies are defined in the code to include most elected and appointed local and state governmental bodies. That would include, for our purposes, the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Authority. It's also applicable to board-appointed committees. So if the board is to appoint a committee, such as the Public Utilities Advisory Committee, that's governed by FOIA. Or any other board-appointed committees. The code requires that a copy of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act be provided by legal counsel within two weeks of the person taking office. So hopefully, you all have received a copy on multiple occasions from me of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And you may wonder why I send it to you ad nauseam over and over again. Well, it's because I'm bored. No, it's because the code requires that I do that. Also, members are required to undergo FOIA training within a short period of time from taking office, and then again every two years. FOIA training has historically been provided by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act Council. And I think, for some reason, there was some unavailability of that training, so they called me in as the B-team. But typically, you can get that online. You can do it virtually. So then you go make a sandwich or whatever you want to do while they're giving you this training online. You can't do that right now because we don't have any sandwiches.
So are you tenured?
Am I what?
Are you tenured?
Tenured? Oh, actually, I did teach at University of Richmond Law School for five years. I feel sorry for the students, but I did. No, it's fun. I enjoyed it. They didn't pay me enough, but that's why I quit. Let's see. Each of you should have received one of these helpful little books. If you have a parrot, you can paper your cage with it. But it's really helpful, actually. It was written by Roger Wiley, and this is the sixth edition, I think, which was 2018. It's the most recent edition that's come out. If and when a more recent edition comes out, I'll share that with you all. But this dude really knows what he's talking about. So, you know, if you have a question, it's probably answered in this little booklet. If not, then you can either look it up in the code or call me. And I'm happy to opine and give you the best advice I can. Public bodies, which remember include the Board of Supervisors, are required to designate a public information officer. And here in Gloucester County, that's Quentin Shepherd in the Department of Community Engagement. It's one of the things that that department handles is FOIA requests and responses regarding public records. Page 2, Paul Harvey.
Do you have a break?
Yes. Do you need one? Remember, there's no sandwiches. All right, FOIA, there's really two major aspects to FOIA, and I've already alluded to this. One is open access to meetings, but the other is open access to public records. And the act defines what public records are. And they're really hard memorializations of the transaction of public business, to paraphrase it. The medium in which the communication is contained is not determinative as to its required disclosing ability. What I mean by that is you could have written something in an email, bad. A text, a memo, a report. Anything written is potentially subject to FOIA. It could be a text on your personal phone. It could be a text on a county phone. That doesn't matter either. If it's a communication about public business, in the transaction of county business, it's potentially subject to disclosure under FOIA. So if you don't want it plastered on a billboard on 17, don't write it. All right? Now, if you want to use smoke signals, that's not FOI-able because they're gone. They're in the ethereal air. But if you don't want it on a billboard, if you don't want it splattered all over the public, do not write it down. FOIA requests for documents, public records, need not be in writing. It can be verbal. So if I were to go to the Public Utilities Department and ask for a copy of a permit or a bill or the zoning and planning, that's a FOIA request. It doesn't have to identify FOIA. The request can be verbal. Does not have to say, "I hereby request pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act the following described records." You don't have to identify FOIA in your request. We have to consider any request for a public record to be one made under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. If you have any questions, go ahead.
Okay, so if it's verbal, how do we... How do we document that that's... You know, so if it's verbal and someone says, "Well, I interpret it that way", and the person who's receiving that information interprets it another way, how do we decide if it's then disputed, who's the right person to understand what that person wants?
Well, the county does have a form through the Community Engagement Department, which memorializes FOIA requests. So we encourage, but cannot require, utilization of that form. So typically, the requister is not averse to complying with our request that the request be submitted on the county form. Because it has the name, address, question, a block to be checked with whether they agree to be charged, if charges are involved. So it has all the necessary information. So typically, we do utilize that form.
But if it's verbal and the person receiving that request, can he question the person about exactly what he wants in case there's interpretation of what that person is asking for?
Absolutely. Oftentimes, it's unclear as to exactly what the requister wants. Sometimes the request is really not what the requister wants, and you may sort of have an implication of what he really wants. And there's no prohibition. In fact, it's encouraged that we clarify and narrow down exactly what the requister wants. Sometimes the requister's request will be so broad that it would entail the provision of hundreds or thousands of pages of documents, of records. And what they really want is one particular document. So we try to encourage the requister to narrow his request down, to be as specific as possible. And that's encouraged. We don't want to go on a wild goose chase, produce a whole bunch of records with which they can paper their parrot's cage that they don't want and they may have to pay for. So, yes. FOIA is only available to Virginia residents and media representatives. So if someone from California... I don't know why I'm picking on Califor... Yeah, I do. Someone from California were to request records, we do not have to respond. If someone from New Jersey, same thing. It's limited to Virginia residents and media corporations and entities operating in the Commonwealth. FOIA is expressly not available to incarcerated individuals. So if someone from, I don't know, the jail or... What is it, Northern Neck Regional Jail, issues a FOIA request, we don't have to respond. Can we? Yes. And sometimes we will respond and be accommodating even if FOIA doesn't apply to that individual. Because, at least from my perspective, we try to be accommodating, no matter who you are, no matter what state you happen to live in. But it technically doesn't apply to residents from other states. Yes?
Mr. Wilmot, what if they were property owners? I mean, wouldn't that make a difference, even if they're not residents?
I don't... I think it does make a difference. I think it's just Virginia residents. Now, it's so easy. It's like my daughter used to say, "There's more than one way to skin a cow." And I tried to tell her that wasn't really what the saying was. It's more than one way to skin a cat, but she went to tech, so whatever. So you can get a friend. If you own property here in Gloucester and you live in New Jersey, you probably have one friend. Everyone has one.
Is that from New Jersey?
And, okay. I don't know. Some other state. You can get a friend to do it, and the friend can request it. Now, and the reason why the person wants the documents is not relevant. It doesn't matter. They may have a malicious heart. They may have a malicious motive. They might not be the nicest person in the world. They might want a document that they think is good for one purpose when it's really not. But why they want the document is not relevant. So I do not recommend asking Mr. Smith or Mrs. Jones, "Why do they want the document?" Doesn't matter. Don't care. Act doesn't take that into account.
Mr. Wilmot?
Yes?
You mentioned a request from the jail. Carol and I sit on the sheriff on the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board, and we've had people asking for Freedom of Information Act. And they tell us under the Freedom of Information Act that they need this information. And they've been providing it to them, but they don't have to provide it to them?
Correct. They do not have to.
Not to the inmate?
Not to the inmate.
Not to the inmate.
But if the inmate's husband or son or mother wants it...
Or family member?
Assuming they're not incarcerated. Yes.
Okay.
They can get it.
Okay. All right.
All right, now, so we get the request, whether it's on the county form or it's verbal or it's written down. What do we do? Well, what we have to do is respond. The county or the public body has five working days within which to respond to the request. And there has to be one of four responses. One response is, "Yes, the documents are available either for production or we'll give you access so that you can look at them." That's one response. One response is, "There are no such documents. There are no documents in existence which are responsive to your request." Then you just tell them. But you have... It has to be one of the four. The third response is, "The documents you requested are exempt from required disclosure pursuant to a particular section of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act." And you have to identify that section. And we'll go over in a little while what some of those exemptions are. Yes?
So someone requests a document, and the responder will say, "No, that document doesn't exist", when it really does. What happens then?
Well, the last section of the presentation is enforcement, but the short answer is, "Willful and knowing violations of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act are punishable by civil penalties." It's not a criminal violation. But you know me. I have lots of flaws, but being a stickler for following the law is not one of them. I am. And so if there's a document which exists, and it's requested, and it's not exempt from required disclosure, I don't care how bad it makes me look. I don't care how bad it makes you look. We have to disclose it, and we will disclose it. That's just what the law says, so that's what we're going to do. So the fourth response is, "The documents exist, or may exist, but it's going to take us longer than five working days to respond to this request." So the county in that case, assuming we're reasonably correct in that regard, can invoke an additional seven working day period within which to respond to the request. So those are the four possible responses. Exempt from required disclosure. Here are the documents. A little of each, or we need more time.
Ted?
Yes?
It's five working days. So if a request comes in on a Friday, then the clock starts ticking on a Friday, the moment it comes in, at noon? Or let's say it's 4:30. What happens if that's 4:30 Friday afternoon? How is that counted in terms of days?
Under Virginia law, when a certain amount of time is given within which to perform an act, the first day is the day after. So if you get it on a Friday, the first day is Monday. So the time within you to receive it is irrelevant. Doesn't matter. So if I were to... If the county were to get a request on a Friday, then we have until the next Friday within which to respond because it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Unless there's a legal holiday in there, in which case you tack on that period of time. If we can't respond within five days, and if the additional seven working days is not enough, you can go to Circuit Court. Meaning, I can go to Circuit Court and ask the judge to give us more time. FOIA is not meant to be a trap. It's used as a weapon sometimes. It's not meant to be a trap. It's not meant to be unreasonable. It's meant to provide the public their right to government documents, which are not exempt, and their right to be present at public meetings. The response of the county to a request for documents must generally be in the form requested by the requister. Meaning, if they want it in hard copy, you send it in hard copy. If they want it electronically, if it's feasible, you send it electronically. Absent a request to a specific medium of response, I always recommend mail, snail mail. Just, you know me. I don't recommend email or electronic. But if it's requested electronically, it's incumbent upon us to provide the documents electronically.
Okay. Mail. If it goes to the Gloucester Post Office, you know the issues they have because it's got to go to Richmond. It might get lost. What do we do about something like that where the person says, "I never got it"? You know, what do you do? Because you're within that five-day, you mail it on a Friday. It's postmarked, where, I guess in Gloucester, it gets postmarked. Goes to Richmond, gets lost.
As long as we send it within the time...
So it's going to be postmarked in Gloucester at that time.
And if it gets lost, and a person says they did not receive the response? Well, let's be amenable. Let's be, you know... We'll give them another copy, however they want the copy. I want people to get what they're entitled to. If they don't get it, then we'll send it again. But if the court were to question whether we responded, and if I sent the letter, then I would hope the court would believe me when I said I sent the letter. I think I'm in a position where the court would probably believe me. So we'll see. I hope that doesn't happen.
Can you send it certified mail so you know?
Yes.
And when you go to the post office, you get stamped and then bam?
And that's something, of course, I think there's an additional expense for that. It's not something we typically do. If you were to have a frequent flyer, meaning an individual who utilizes FOIA perhaps more than they should, or you would like them to, or they utilize it for malicious purposes, or they've asserted they've not received previous responses, that's a circumstance where you might want to use registered or certified mail to prove receipt. But generally, that's not what people are like. Generally, people, believe it or not, are pretty nice. And if they get it, they know they got it, and they won't claim they didn't. So generally, I wouldn't want to incur the extra expense for a certified or registered mail. If it's estimated that the cost to the county is going to exceed more than $200 in responding to the request, the county may require a deposit from the requister in an amount estimated to be equal to the cost associated with responding. So if, for example, they're asking for 1,000 documents or they're asking for documents from multiple sources, sometimes it takes a while to gather these documents. You have... Sometimes you have... A lot of times, you have to go through the IT department. And they have to go through the ruminations to gather responsive documents. So sometimes there are hours involved, and there are hundreds or thousands of pages of documents involved. So that takes considerable time and effort. So if it's estimated reasonably that it will exceed $200 to respond, you can require, the county can require, a deposit from the requister in an amount estimated to be equal to the cost associating with responding. The clock tolls when you ask for that additional, that deposit. So let's say you're on your third day, and you said, "This is a Sisyphean task in producing these documents. And I hope everyone knows who Sisyphus is. If you don't, ask me later because it's really not relevant." So at the third day, if you find it's really going to be a difficult task, and it's going to cost $500, then you can ask for the $500 deposit, and the five-day clock tolls. So wherever it stopped. And until they pay that deposit, then it starts again upon payment of the deposit. Public bodies are not required to...
Ted, real quickly. So this is including hourly time of the time of the individual, correct?
Yes. You have... The Board of Supervisors has a Freedom of Information Act policy. It's Section 300 of your policies. And... Well, I brought it with me. It's here somewhere. But you do have a policy, and that policy outlines the charges attributable to responding to FOIA requests. But you knew that. You were just testing me to see if I knew that. The first five pages of a response are free, gratis. After that, it's 25 cents a page. There's also charges associated with the hourly cost of staff time in responding to FOIA requests. Now, I'm often asked for assistance, for better or for worse, in vetting and responding to these FOIA requests. I do not charge for my time. There have been times when the county's been confronted with or enjoyed the experience of FOIA requests that have involved hundreds or thousands of pages in response, which can take some time. But I don't bill for my time. And one of the reasons why I don't bill for my time, even though some other local government attorneys do bill for their times, if we're ever confronted with a situation where the citizen says, "Your charges are unreasonable. You're charging too much", I want to easily be able to contradict that assertion for, among other reasons, that I don't charge for my time and that I had to take two hours or three hours of my time, which is worth, well, a little, and I didn't charge for it. And so I want to be in that position of, "Judge, your honor, it really cost us $1,000, but we only billed $380." And we can show it. And I think that's going to be invaluable if we're ever challenged. Been challenged two or three times over the years, and it doesn't go well for the challenger. "The public body is not required to create a record that does not exist." And that goes back to my point about, it's not a Freedom of Information Act request. It's not that we have to answer your questions. We might want to answer your questions. Absolutely. I have no issue with answering citizens' questions. The point is, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act does not require that you answer their questions or that you create a document. It's that you provide existing documents that are not exempt. I have... I refer to the Board of Supervisors Policy 300, which outlines the procedures to be utilized, the charges associated with the providing documents, et cetera. I have a policy where if my assistance is requested... I circulated this policy in 2010 and again in 2017. Some of the actors may have changed, but the names have been changed to protect the innocent... No. Some of the actors have changed, but the policy's not changed. If my assistance is requested with reference to a FOIA request for documents, I ask that I be provided a copy of the request. And if it wasn't written, then just write down what they requested. A copy of all documents which would be responsive to the request, along with any questions or concerns that the staff person may have with reference to the request and the documents. So I have in one place, at one time, the requests, the documents which would be responsive to the request, and all the questions and concerns. That way, I can compare the documents to the requests to the exemptions. And then I can address any issues or questions that may have been raised. So that's my own policy. There are certain exemptions from required disclosure for the production of public records. And I won't go through all of them because there are, I don't know, more than 30 exemptions. There are exemptions for some records dealing with public safety. There are some exemptions for administrative investigation records, educational records, Department of Social Service records, proprietary information and trade secrets, that's normally in the context of procurement records, and law enforcement records, criminal records. Most of these are partial exemptions, so they're not total exemptions. They're just, for example, criminal records. Most criminal records which are involved in ongoing criminal prosecutions and investigations are exempt. Once the deal is done, and the prosecution is finished, and the investigation is finished, most documents are disclosable, most criminal record documents. There are other exemptions. For example, the county administrator has an exemption for working papers which have not been distributed to the Board of Supervisors. It's not just the county administrator. It's the executive officer of public bodies. Their working papers. I've been blessed with this exemption, which is a good thing, until those working papers have been distributed to the public or to their legislative bodies. There's an exemption for work product and legal advice of attorneys. So most of my records would be exempt from required disclosure. I typically do not object to disclosure of documents which I have not slapped with the word confidential because I try to be cognizant and careful to put confidential when I think it should be made confidential and not when I don't. So just because I enjoy this exemption doesn't mean I always invoke it. There are more than 30 other exemptions. I want to conclude on this portion of my very titillating conversation. I want to urge the caution to each of you not to reduce anything in writing which you don't want publicly disclosed. All right? I think we had one situation where there was some texts, which was a question, "Well, do we have to disclose the texts?" I've texted like twice in my life, but that's not me. Yeah. So, yes, if it has to do with public business, it's... business, it's presumptively disclosable. All right. So that's it on public records. Any questions on public records?
On me.
On me. Okay. Let's quickly do open meeting requirements. The code defines meeting, and meeting is a meeting of the public body, more than two members. So if Mr. Smith and Mr. Crisco are talking about public business, and it's just the two of them, it's not a meeting. If Mr. Brazani chimes in, and there's three of them, where it's not, so it's not where two or three are gathered together, it's where three are gathered together, it's a meeting, if you're talking about public business. So you are cautioned, if your intent is to talk about county business, and there are more than two of you present, please understand it's subject to FOIA. One reason for, remember I told you that board-appointed committees are subject to FOIA, like the Public Utilities Advisory Committee? One reason, not the only reason, but one reason why sometimes committees are appointed by the county administrator is that those committees are not governed by the constraints of FOIA, because they're county administrator-appointed committees, not board committees. So, for example, the committee that was appointed the other night to talk about the fire department, and I'm sorry I brought that up, but I did, that's a board committed, appointed committee, maybe should be committed. That means it's governed by FOIA. So when the four of you, or five, I guess it was five, get together, make sure that Trish advises you what FOIA requires, because she's really good at that. Or I'll help. All these open, all these public meetings have to be open to the public. Notice of the meeting must be posted at least 72 hours in advance, if 72 hours is available. Sometimes it's a very quick, emergency, urgent situation where 72 hours is not available, and that's fine. But if you have 72 hours, you need to post it and notify the public of it, but not necessarily advertise it in advance. You got to tell them the place, you got to tell them the date, and you got to tell them the time. So please do that. Minutes must be taken at all open meetings, and minutes are available for disclosure under the records part, even draft minutes. So sometimes a question arises, "Well, but the EDAs' minutes are only in draft form, they haven't approved them yet." I don't care. I mean, because they're disclosable. If there are draft minutes, and they're asked for it, you got to give it to them. You can say these are draft-only, and you should say these are only draft minutes, subject to perusal at a later date and perhaps approval, but you've got to provide them. Public must be allowed to attend, but not necessarily participate in all open meetings. Recently, there was an assertion made by a citizen that she was allowed to talk for as long as she wanted, and that she can talk at any meeting about any subject. Well, no, that's not true. FOIA requires that you allow the presence of the public at your meetings. Citizens are allowed to participate in all public hearings, and this board wisely has allowed the citizens to participate in almost all meetings, and talk in almost all meetings. Citizen comment period. You're not required to do that, but you've done that. The code does require that you allow citizens to talk at at least one meeting per month. So, and that's a relatively recent requirement, but I didn't tell you that was a requirement because you're already doing more than that. Public speakers may be limited to a certain amount of time when they talk. You probably should have done that with me. And typically, you'll do three minutes, and it'll be on your evaluation, Mr. Wilmore. Typically, it's three minutes, and that's kosher. You're allowed to limit the citizen to a certain amount of time, and three minutes is fine. Electronically-held meetings are allowed if the public body has passed a policy providing for those electronic participation meetings. You have not done that. We did have that in the context of the COVID, and the Zoom meetings and all that. Oh, it's terrible. All of that. But you don't have a generally applicable electronic meeting communication policy which you've implemented. So it's come up before you a couple times, and you've thought about it, but you don't have to do that, and you've chosen not to. Closed meetings. Closed meetings are, and what are closed meetings? Well, they're meetings where the public's not allowed to attend, and they're allowed for some 55 purposes, not all of which are applicable to the Board of Supervisors. You, y'all typically utilize maybe four or five of the exemptions at times. One is personnel, to talk about any county personnel, their duties, performance, responsibilities, assignment, demotion, resignation, et cetera. One is to talk about the prospective sighting of a business or industry in the county where no announcement has been made public regarding that prospective business or expansion of a present business. One is the potential acquisition or disposition of property or an interest in property. So if the county wanted to talk about selling the old page site, or leasing the old page site, it might be wise to talk about that in private if talking about it in public would be thought to potentially adversely affect the county's bargaining position. So there are times when you might want to talk about potential acquisition or disposition of property in closed meeting. Provision of legal advice. Once in a blue moon, you'll ask me what I think about something important, and if you want to do it in closed meeting, you can do that. Closed meetings must be convened pursuant to motion or resolution which identifies the subject to be considered and the exemption involved, the exemption from open meeting requirements. So you'll see wisely that this county utilizes pre-printed, thanks, Trish, resolutions which identify the matter to be discussed, and it cites the code section with the exemption. Now, when you come out of the closed meeting, and all the peeps get invited back in, you have to come out and you have to certify that the matter set forth in the resolution to convene in a closed meeting actually occurred, and that the matters discussed or considered were the ones identified in the motion, in the resolution by which it was convened, and that the only things talked about were exempt. You have to certify that. The code requires that, and that's 2.23712D. If you vote no, and Mr. Weinberger did that once, the code requires you explain why you voted no. So although it's tempting perhaps sometimes to just vote no on anything, try not to vote no on one of these unless you mean it, because you've got to explain why you voted no. Why did you vote no that the only matters talked about were exempt from open meeting requirements? So try to vote yes unless you can't vote yes. All right, that's the third part of four. What's that?
What for abstaining?
I don't know. I think you might still have to, if you don't vote yes, I think you're going to have to explain it. But it's, I can look it up for you right now. It's 3712D. Okay, it's in 3712D. Well, I can do it right now. It'll take me two seconds. Well, more than that. "Any member of the public body who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of Clause 1 and 2 shall, so state prior to the vote, indicating the substance of the departure that in his judgment has taken place. The statement shall be reduced..." It doesn't, so it doesn't clarify whether abstaining is sufficient? I would advise that if you can't vote yes, then you should be deemed to be voting no. But that's just my opinion. It doesn't say it in the code. All right, the last part. Aren't we all happy about that? Enforcement. Violations of FOIA may be sought pursuant to petition in the general district court or the circuit court. So if some citizen says that you did not comply, county, you did not comply with the requirements of FOIA, either in open meeting requirements, or in production of records documents, they may file a suit against you or the county in circuit court or in general district court alleging a violation of FOIA. Willful and knowing violations of FOIA are punishable as civil penalties, not criminal penalties. So we're not talking about the Conflict of Interests Act, which I'll talk about some other time, maybe, if I don't have a conflict that night. They're punishable by civil penalties of between $500 and $2,000, and second offenses between $2,000 and $5,000. If the public body wrongfully certifies the appropriateness of a closed meeting, the civil penalty is up to $1,000. So if you vote yes, and you should have voted no when you come out of closed meeting, then you're subject to a potential penalty, civil penalty. And that can be personal. It may not be against the county, it may be against you personally. And attorney's fees, which is really the thing, not so much the $1,000 or $500. Attorney's fees may be awarded for violations which have been found of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. So if the county were to sue and lose, which I don't think is going to happen, but it's possible, then we'd be subject to potentially paying attorney's fees. That's all I got. That's it. Any questions? No. Okay. Well, I enjoyed the heck out of that.
Any questions from the board members? No questions? Thank you, Mr. Wilmore.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the old landfill solar inquiry. Steel?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the others who came tonight for the training as well, and Mr. Wilmore's time, and doing that so we could meet not only your needs, but other committee needs, or appointed needs. Tonight, I'd like to present an idea to you of a potential small revenue maker. A number of years ago, the board was approached by an individual who was interested in doing solar on top of the county's old landfill. And at the time, the board wasn't interested, but it was also, we were still in the closure process, and still being monitored, and had methane measurements and things to deal with. And recently, that came to a close, and we reached our five-year period, which was a great thing to get through, which at about the same time, we were approached again, but this time by another company that was interested in using the property. We wanted to understand more before coming to you of how feasible it was. So Mr. Baines has been handling this, but he wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm standing in for him. He took the individual around, showed them the landfill, went over, you know, all the different things of what the requirements would be for at least their case. And so in order to get something to come to the board, we went, started down the procurement path, and then crossed with the county attorney and Christine and all, and realizing, and also Ms. Ducey Ortiz, as far as what our regulations are on solar. So if the board is interested, we would like to know that before we go the next step, which would be to proceed with a conditional use permit application. Now, you may recall that there are two zoning districts that are, where solar is of this scale, utility, not like residential, is allowed, and that's the SC1 and the RC1. And the landfill property is in SC1. In SC1, using the 2% maximum percent that the board approved with a policy for solar, 882 acres, .9, can go into solar, and at this time, we only have 101 acres. So we have only used .23% of that zoning district. So it meets the standards for that. But there will be quite a bit of work in doing a CUP. It's a little awkward, too, because if we proceed, you'll be, the CUP would come before you, and it's your property, and you would be ruling on that. But it also has a number of opportunities between the planning commission and here for public input. Again, if the board is interested, what we're looking for is a head nod, go forward with the work. If you're not interested, don't think it's a good idea, then we will not pursue it. The, my estimate, looking at what others are being paid, is it would be somewhere between $20,000 and $40,000 a year in revenue. It's not a huge amount, but it's also a space that pretty much has very limited use. We do have, and you all approved, use of the model airplane, I don't know if I can say it right, model airplane group, so RC airplane, radio-controlled. And they're aware that this is being considered, and even if it's, again, goes forward, it would probably take a number of years before anything would be on that property that would require them to leave. So it's up to the board, how you would like us to proceed.
So we would pay for the CUP and sponsor the CUP?
We would sponsor the CUP, and we don't charge ourselves. And the CUP would state the things that would be required, like the closing documents that would be, basically would fold into an RFP if it passed, that we would go out for a request for proposal for a business that could meet all the requirements of the CUP.
And are we sure that we're not going to have to monitor any more methane gas?
That leads me to my question, liability.
Well, they are also very concerned about that, and they're comfortable and looked in. We're in much better shape than others are that are interested in using for solar because they're still being monitored, but we're done. So it doesn't, never say never, but we are not having to monitor.
Would we still be liable if something happened, while this owner has it?
Our county attorney would work with us on that, on how to transfer all the liability. They would fence it off, keep the public from being able to come in. They are, at least the one organization is very familiar with doing solar on landfills. They're non-penetrating. They just sit on top.
But if the facility, let's say, leaks methane and something, you know, we've got electronics on the site, and the spark goes and sets the whole place on fire, who's liable?
I would turn that over to the county attorney to at least review when we would get to that point, so that we would cover ourselves with liability coverage. I mean, and it might even be that the county would want to have an extra rider policy and require that.
This isn't the first place this has been done. For a number of years, I've worked in the solar industry, and these products are mounted in such a way that they don't penetrate. And it would be, it would be probably easy for Ted to find something to modify to his liking that would protect us from that situation. I really like solar. My concern is, even though it's in an area where there's room in that cap, we are going to be using up some of that cap for county property. I voted against the 2% cap back in the day, and I think if we decide to move forward with this, we probably need to look at the cap again for the areas that we allow utility-scale solar.
And so don't forget that the majority of panels that are made in, actually in the world today are made by the Chinese, so we're not, we'll be vulnerable there.
Have we, I mean, as an ancillary question, have we had many requests for solar facilities since we put that ordinance in effect of the 2%?
Not that I'm aware of. We have six projects, and three are looking at expiration that were extended and will expire in July. Two, I'm sorry. And I was impressed, though, by the number of solar projects that have happened in the county that are on the individual level, and that's something that the building department tracks, and that's continuing kind of steadily.
Ms. Steel, you mentioned the figure of 882 acres. Is that the full development, or is that the available acreage?
That's the available, or that's what the limit for the county is. In any SC1-zoned of all of Gloucester County, we could only have 882 acres in solar. And currently, we have 101 acres in solar in that category.
So how big would this project?
Between 20 and 50, dependent upon, our whole site is only 50 acres. But part of the slope and things like that, they would not be using.
They would purchase this project?
It would be a, well, we would set it up the way we want, but what's been proposed would be a lease, like a 25-year lease.
That's true, but I'm sorry. And if it's a lease, then there's still some entanglements there that can tie the county back, right?
Well, again, it's being done elsewhere. I can tell you, even Middlesex County right now has their RFP out. So I'm not saying we should follow others' leads, but people have found ways to do this. Gloucester, New Jersey, has solar on their landfill. People find ways. Their's bigger than ours, but anyway.
I would prefer selling it, and you let Pontius Pilate and reduce, eliminate our liability altogether. liability altogether.
I'm not sure we could, and I'm not sure there'd be people who'd want to buy, you know, but.
Mr. Chair.
We can look anything you want.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wilmot.
I initially became aware of the Middlesex County proposal to utilize their closed landfill for a solar facility. And I spoke, I'm a friend with, of the county attorney in Middlesex, and she asked for my sage, not green, advice. And, and I said, well, what I would try to do is, if your, if, if your board is of a mind to lease the old landfill in Middlesex for that purpose, I would try to put in provisions of the lease agreement, putting the onus of responsibility of all liabilities on the less, less see, on the company leasing it. I don't know whether that's feasible or whether they'd agree, be agreeable to that, but we're all aware that these closed landfills carry with them potential liability to the locality, and you have to dot all your i's, cross all your t's, and you're, you're on the hook forever, basically. So to the extent possible, my advice would be to try to shift that liability to the less see, to the extent that's possible. But at a minimum, there may be times when we need to address an environmental problem on-site, and if there's stuffs in the way, you've got to have them be responsible for removing it so that we can do what it is we have to do. So, yes, I thought about potential provisions if this thing goes through, but one of them, as I've indicated, is let's try to shift the potential liabilities as much as possible.
Okay. Where are we? Yeah, 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 yeah. Good? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I, I have some mixed feelings on it. It seems like it's a, it's a very small acreage with extremely minimal return. It, it somewhat interferes with our ability to manage this location if there are environmental concerns. So I, I'm not wholly on board with it, but if the majority of the board wants to at least consider the proposal, I can understand that, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm not a strong yes by any means.
So we're just considering the proposal?
We are, and it would definitely come back to the board. I, I think that the CUP process will take a good amount of staff time, so if there's hesitation, I'd rather not do all the work and then have you all not be in favor of it. But at the same time, you would not be making a decision of doing it until we come back to you a couple of different ways.
So will the CUP and the staff time required to do this take the staff away from doing other things that need to be done for the county?
It would have to be worked in within, I mean, it would not be a priority over customers who are in line and things like that, no.
Okay. So where are we?
I'm a big proponent of solar, but this is county property, and we have put caps on other zoning district. And I think largely some of the reason we don't see anything else in the RC one is because these solar companies are aware that there's a cap, and we have maximized what we can do in that area of the county. The SC one area, there's probably not the large acres, large tracts available for this. But unless we're going to consider doing something different with the, those caps, then I, I, I'm sort of on the fence as far as, I, I would see a proposal, but I don't know how far I would go with the CUP unless we really look back at what we're doing.
Yeah, I'd be willing to back off. I mean, I can sense the concern here, and in particular for the fact that, you know, with the staff that we have and the things that they have to do, I'd hate to have work by them compromised and not being able to meet the citizens' needs that, and again, if we're looking at only $20,000 to $40,000 a year lease, you know, while I think it's neat, maybe we should just bag it and not worry about it.
If I could make a suggestion as maybe we wait to, I mean, we're not, don't have to proceed on anything, and we see what happens in Middlesex and what rate of return they get, and if there's more interest, I can at least report it to you all and see if you want to think about it more. And that also, it doesn't, a no doesn't mean no forever, because we do have the comp plan and other things that are, are important, so it could be brought back up another time.
So it's no for, no for right now?
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Supervise the discussion. Supervise the discussion?
Mr. Smith, did I note in your email that you were expecting us to perhaps
Yes.
identify people that we want to
Yes.
see? Okay, so I'm going to start the discussion.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thought about this a lot. I thought about comments that Mr. Bizani made the other night and Mr. Crisco and some of the other comments, and I would like to see every department head here for this reason. A lot of the citizens don't understand the way our government works, okay? And I think this would be a good opportunity because the meetings are televised, and they could see exactly what everyone does and how important they are. I brought my notes here, which aren't notes, but there are two graphics that really stand out in this discussion that I think are really relevant to Mr. Bizani, because his comments, which are appropriate, that's his, let's drop 3% rather than raise taxes 4.5%. This graphic of departments tells me a lot of that and this graph, which is, sorry about this, that one, which is the, where most of our money goes. And a young woman mentioned yesterday, she wanted to know, well, what's school transfer? Well, we assume we know what school transfer is, but she had a question about, well, what's school transfer? This, to me, would be a great opportunity for the citizens. They could, they could watch it on TV or follow. But I want to hear, because this is a lot of money here, these departments, what do they do, and what would happen if we dropped 3%? So. Yeah, I mean, we had very few people at the public hearing yesterday, and we heard from one individual that they hear from people in their walk of life, no one came to the meeting. This is going to be an opportunity for us to dig deep and say, okay, what's going on? And are we looking at how important that 4.5 or 4.3? I know Mr. Crisco said at the school board meeting, I want to fully fund schools. Well, you know, they've got a $2.5 million outside request.
I stated that we just met with them, and if we didn't advertise to fully fund them, then why do we have the meeting? And I, you know, I don't know where I'm going to land on how we fund or at what level we fund, but for us to have sat there, for them to go through their needs and their wants and everything else, and then just go, we're only going to advertise for the 4.3 that Ms. Steel had presented to us, and we wasted our time, we wasted their time. I, I can't agree more. But with that scheduling, do we have enough budget work sessions scheduled to meet all those needs? Because I do know that next Thursday is going to be a challenge for me.
Okay, that's okay. But you did say last year's budget, we talked about nothing, and we went through, we had no discussion. Let's, let's dig into it and have a discussion on the relevance of all these departments, who's what. I mean, it's a great opportunity, we haven't done this in years.
Yeah.
And let's, you know, and then remember, we balance our budget. It's unlike the federal government, we balance our budget every year. What would it take? I mean, if we drop 3%, not raise the taxes, how is that going to affect it? How do the citizens respond to certain activities?
The, the other concern that I have, you gentlemen saw my email, is when we raise, if we raise taxes 4.3 cents, it's retroactive all the way to January. And I asked Maria, is the additional revenues that will come, because we're going to charge people tax, the, the new tax rate, effective June 30th? And what is, you know, we're, we're going to get a revenue, I don't like to call it a windfall, but a revenue increase that's not accounted for in our budget coming up for '25 and '26. And she said it is not considered. We need to decide whether or not we want to make the tax rate effective July 1, so that the taxpayers don't have to retro all the way back to January 1, which could create a windfall, and I hate to use that word, but the money goes into the general fund and it's not tracked. So that's another concern we should talk about. You're, you're collecting additional funds on June 30th for a policy that you implemented for next year, for the next fiscal year, which begins on July 1.
Mr. Crisco?
Mr. Wilmot, do we have that ability to pass a budget with a tax increase and then make the tax increase effective July 1, which means that the folks, their first bill with the new tax rate would be the December 5 bill?
I'm not sure. You'd have to go through several processes at a minimum to change your tax year from the calendar year to the fiscal year. And if I'm recalling correctly, we went down this path a few years ago.
I said January 1, but this is just July 1, starting the fiscal year.
Right. But in order to change it from the way it is to something else, assuming that's allowable, we'd have to pass ordinances and have public hearings. Most things can be done, it's the devil's in the details, but first I have to check and see if we can do it. But right now, the tax year is January 1 through December 31, and we're a quarter of the way through that tax year right now. We should have a pretty good idea of what we need, since we're already a quarter of the way through the year. So I, I'd be hopeful that we wouldn't have to change the arrangement, although it, it's possible.
You, you wouldn't have to change the arrangement, but you could estimate the additional revenues you would have picked up on June 30th and include that in our budget for, for the next fiscal year.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that
You don't have to change the date.
But if, if we, if we keep it, the tax year, January 1 through June 30th, then we're already four months in to that tax year. So we can, you can factor that into whatever tax raise, if any, that's going to be passed.
But from January 1 to June 30th is the old 59, what is, what is our current rate at, 59 cents right now? 59 cents? That's what should be taxed, the citizens. If you want to include the retro impact of the January 1 with the new tax rate, then include that amount in your budget.
What, what you could do without changing any dates is you could assess a certain tax rate as of January 1, and then you could change it half of the way through. You could do that.
If I can't?
I, I don't think I'd recommend it, but I think you could do it.
Mr. Chair, this is something, our board members, this is something that we discussed today. Maria and I were working on the budget when Mr. Bizani's email came in, and we sort of looked at three different options, and knowing this, obviously have to go through the county attorney and looking code, but one would be to make some sort of an ordinance change on our calendar times and things, and we felt that was not feasible for where we are right now. But if the board wanted to look at it again or something, you know, that's fine. I did a search on the tax collection dates of counties in the state of Virginia. Fairfax County collects July 28th and December 5th. Every other locality that does a, to a year, does June. So if, in the past, you may remember, because we don't raise taxes every year by any means, but when we have had tax increases, the board has often earmarked any windfall for capital. I would suggest, and this is one of the options, that because we are already a million dollars not being funded in pay-go projects, we don't have a capital reserve for things like that, that the board could identify the amount, which, we did some quick math, and we will confirm with you on Monday, so please don't hold me exactly to it, but we're looking at about a million dollars. And that million dollars, it was like $997,000, that million dollars could be earmarked. The other is, I took, we took that and we factored it in that if you lowered the tax rate because of the tax increase, so it wouldn't be so much, that we could do that. There's a risk in that, though, because you're still, we are not rich in reserves of anything happening, and you're looking at the June that has to come in next June to make that amount up. My personal comfort level would be for the board to identify that as a capital reserve, and that way, it's going into the capital fund, and it's earmarked for that.
Okay, if we did that, could we earmark some of that money for utilities? Given all of the stuff that has gone on the last few months?
And
Could
And that's, no, you, you start it, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say the timing of it. The other thing is, I don't, because I went to last year's June 30th, Ms. Thomas's report, the treasurer's report, and she had 83, 87-point-something percent turned in at that point. And so, what I just, the figure I just gave you was based on the past, so what you would probably want to do is budget for it, but understand that you would not do anything with it until the audit or until it's well-collected, you really know how much extra did you bring in in that June.
And that's, I was waiting for budget discussions to, 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 to put this out there, but
But you opened the, you opened the door.
You opened indoors box, so I'm going to kick it open here. I was going to make the suggestion that, you know, we have some stuff coming out of unassigned fund balance that we, as a county, should probably match what the increase in rate that, for these rate payers, that we should find a way to match that with county funds to expedite what they're able to do a little bit sooner. And especially try to get us caught up to where we would be if we just followed Raftellus' report at a quicker, slightly quicker place than what we're proposing.
Yeah, let's look at all the options. I mean, we've got the next month, we've got a lot of stuff on the table, given what is being discussed here. But to me, this is the opportunity. We've got a lot of work ahead of us in the next three weeks. Let's get it right, because again, I don't want the citizens to say we're doing something even though they say that, you know how she said that, you know, that they don't come here because they know we're going to do what we want to do. Let's try to prove that differently this time.
You made a good comment the, the last one.
But if we were to move it to July 1, we wouldn't make our budget for this year.
Right, because it's not included.
So we would be short.
You would have to, I think, plan for this in future years and really consider, that's why I said I would knock that one out.
No. But again, but again, this is stuff that's neat, that we're talking about, something that is very relevant to our budget, not just now, but in the future, and things that we can do that would be relevant to the needs of the county. In particular, again, utilities, over and over. We've got lots of issues with that that need to be resolved, and the rate increase that we just passed is only for operation, is not for the things that are really necessary in terms of the types of things that have happened in the recent past, like Mark Pine, what we're going to do about Mark Pine, and how complicated that's going to be, even if we do it on our own, it's going to be very costly.
Okay. Mr. Steel, if I could just suggest something?
Yes.
That we've heard from, so far, from everyone. If we could just take this and digest it, come back when we have our budget discussions for the simple reason is we're supposed to be here for, you know, what we're here for tonight. Okay? And if we can discuss it when we come back, we can all come back and discuss it. Now, I do have a question about what we want to do about having department heads, you know, come to our meeting. Is that something we, we don't want, we can't do it all in one night? So we've got to decide something.
I think
Yes, sir.
I think, one second, I think we need to, yes, we need to digest everything that's been said, but we need to get some ideas on the table, because as Mr. Crisco said earlier, not that we can't have more meetings, but the number of meetings that are scheduled before budget adoption is very few. So the more ideas we get on the table tonight, the better off staff is going to be to answer some of these questions.
So do we have any more ideas on the table?
The other, the other, the other idea, excuse me, one more second. The other idea was a 3% look at our budget and see if the, if the staff can look at their budget and see if they can reduce by 3%. I mean, it's, it's, corporations do it all the time. I mean, I, at Newport News, we did it two or three times every other year. So to look at your budget and say, hey, can you, can you, we call it a stretch budget. And so, 3% in my view is feasible, but we'll have to see what the director
All departments.
All departments.
And, and can I clarify whether, because this is something we looked at today, if we look at 3% overall, we are very heavy in personnel, and there are some departments that have just a couple people. So it would cut into positions. There's another is looking at 3% of operating, which is going to have much less of an overall effect, but it is still at 3% of operating, which is gonna have much less of an overall effect, but it is still going to impact mostly, I would say, training opportunities.
What you would do is prorate your, prorate the 3% amongst the departments based on their size and their budget, and say, your prorated amount to meet that 3% is, some departments might be a half a percent, other departments may be more than 3%, but overall, it ends up being 3%. I created those, but I did them all the time.
Are you talking still, just make sure, 3% of the overall budget, not 3% of operations?
3% of the budget, which it could be divvied up and makes the size of each department.
Okay.
If you're a small department, then you're a small contributor. If you're a large department, then you're a larger contributor.
So like the sheriff's department would be very large compared to...
On all average, it'll add up to 3%. It's about a million dollars.
Right. So the other thing is, are we looking at any other cuts that you would like us to figure out that are for non-departments?
Okay, so, well, another idea, I'm just throwing out ideas that were brought up the other night, is there was the question of 3% cola bonus versus add-on, or...
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
So let me hit you with that 3%, because that's where I want to go. This morning, as I was riding to Richmond with my wife to get our truck fixed, my phone started ringing. Several county employees and several school system employees reached out to me, and they said, we heard the distinguished Mr. Bizani talk about cutting the pay raise. They said, that's fine, Mr. Supervisor, but if you're gonna cut my pay raise, could you do something about my health insurance? Because when you take my 3% pay raise away, you're not doing a, and I won't use that term, thing about my 14 and 17% increase in my health insurance. And another man told me today, he said, you're probably not gonna believe this, but it's the truth. He said, we're doing, he said, my family's doing everything they can, county employee, doing everything we can to keep our head above water, living within our means. And we're going to the food bank, just like everybody else. So I felt impelled, since somebody brought, since you all started the conversation, to tell you what I was told today. If you're gonna cut our pay raise, please, whoever's in charge, look at the health insurance, because the health insurance is going up 12%, 14%, whatever it may be, it's still going up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson? Mr. Gibson?
I certainly appreciate the various ideas that have been put forward. My concern with a 3% across-the-board cut would be, I recall the first year I was on the board, there was an exodus of county employees because of low pay, and it was really compromising services. And it makes sense. If you can go to York County, or Newport News, or Williamsburg for a substantial pay increase and just commute, it makes sense. And so that would be my main concern, is that our services for our citizens would suffer, and we would lose significant numbers of employees. I think it could end up backfiring on us. So whether we, as a board, vote for a tax increase or not, I mean, that's, that's obviously the main decision, but I don't think our budget and our county workforce could handle a 3% reduction.
And I'm sorry that I talked ahead of you, but I apologize for that. But the other was, again, you know, we, not just bonuses, but could we hold off a 3% until January versus July, you know, save a few pennies? Is that possible? I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas, not that I'm for it, but I think all these things ought to be on the table. And when we bring these department heads, the issue of cuts can be, you know, really telling on us as to what it means and their ability to help the citizens of Gloucester. Because we're the ones, if things happen, we get it. Not everyone else, they're gonna talk to us about what's going on. So we need to understand, you know, the devil, the devil's in the details.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to discuss? Okay.
From a timing perspective, there's definitely not a way for every person to be able to make Monday, just from a scheduling purpose.
Correct.
But if I put that invitation out, and I find out how many we have, and if it ends up being an extra load, we can definitely make adjustments, but I'd like to get some here on Monday to be able to facilitate keeping our budget on track. I know that the 24th is a problem for Mr. Crisco. We have the 28th and then the 30th also on the calendar. The 28th is listed as a possible. I'm assuming at this point, y'all might want to lock that date in, is the 28th?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So if, right, the 24th, he's, I don't, do you...
Yeah, it was, it was, I've had this out scheduled for a year, and I saw the possible, and I was like, oh, we'll be good. Well, obviously, we're not gonna be good. If you guys have to meet without me, you have to meet without me. I mean, don't hold it up because of me. I'm just saying, because it was, when I saw it was listed as possible, thinking, ah, we'll probably dwindle, dwindle one down anyway. We've been meeting, seems like twice a week, every week now for a month and a half. So...
That's what we get the paid bucks for, man. Come on.
No, exactly. Whatever needs to happen, will happen.
So the, if we decide on Monday, we can still make the announcement, correct? It 's tough, I mean, it's tight, but if you all want to wait to decide on, well, let's do it this way. Even if we still have to make that decision, I can find out how many people and what it's gonna look like for Monday.
Okay.
And see an exchange there, if you want to keep the 24th for additional ones.
And the details of each department are in the budget book, right? So we can look at each department, what their budget is.
Yes.
Yes.
In the next couple days, can you look and see what other days may be available? I know we're pushed, running out of time.
Okay.
But just see for accommodations for everything.
Okay.
Because I believe there's a number, and Ms. Calloway may have to answer this, I can't find it fast enough, but I know we have in the budget, the compensation corrections, and there's an amount of dollars there. So is that, was that like 690,000 for the compensation study implementation?
Yes, it was 690.
Okay. Can, for Monday, can we have you or Ms. Calloway prepare for us if we start that later in the, in the year, see what that does as far as shaving off, you don't have to answer it tonight, Ms. Calloway, this is a Monday, this is a Monday thing. I'll give you till Monday to prepare. Just, just to look at massaging that, so that we can, instead of doing a 3%, maybe that, we take some from there and push it off, defer it a little bit till we, because next year's an assessment year, too, guys, so we're gonna, things are gonna change. So just a thought.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody would like to put out on the table? Nothing?
Send me an email.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay. All right. Then, yes, we do have a closed meeting tonight, so ask Mr. Wilmot if he will read us into our closed meeting.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of April 15, 2025, and whereas the nature of the subject is personnel matters, more specifically, the county administrator's assignments, performance, and interactions with the board, such discussion in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes here and express pursuant to the legal authority herein recited.
Okay.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in closed meeting.[1174.16]
Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion and closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting. And whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed or considered during closed meeting, and the only subjects heard, discussed or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened, now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene an open meeting at its meeting of April 15th, 2025 and certifies the matter set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Oh, roll call.
Certify, I'm sorry, certify.
All right, Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Back end, sir.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We in here.